Northrop, this is the Hudson City Commission for January 11th, 2022. I'd like to call to order by first calling for a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Would everybody please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bolheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Debray?
Here.
Groot?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrop?
Here. Now is a moment of silence. The mayor pro tem has asked for me to take leadership on this one, seeing it's the first one for the year. Those of you who don't know me, I probably do a little more reading than some, particularly when it comes to philosophy and leadership. And I have a book here called Daily Stoics. And the January 1st devotional was such, and I changed it a little bit, but I just want to read it, and then we'll go straight into the meeting. "The chief task in life is simply this: to identify and separate matters so that we can say clearly to ourselves which are externals not under our control and which have to do with choices we actually can control. The single most important practice in effective leadership is differentiating between what we can change and what we can't, what we have influence over and what we do not. No matter how hard we try, we can't make others like us. Time spent hurtling yourself, ourselves, at immovable objects is time not spent on things that we can change. Practice something called the Serenity Prayer. God grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change and the courage to change the things we can and the wisdom to know the difference. We should focus on making clear what parts of our day are within our control and what parts are not. We will not only be happier, but more importantly, effective in our city leadership." So, thank you. Before we start the consent agenda item, I believe there's one commissioner that's choosing to make a change to the agenda tonight?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to item number, it's the last item of the night, I don't see the second page, 16, I think? 15, to add a appointment to the board of review as well in that item.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of changing the agenda, identify a board review vote tonight. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The changes to the agenda are approved. Moving on to the consent agenda items. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 minutes of the city commission work session dated December 14th, regular session dated December 14th, downtown development authority dated November 3rd, board review dated December 14th, planning commission regular session dated December 15th, and the downtown development authority dated January 5th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second the motion? It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The consent agenda items are approved. Now is the time for some public comments. I'm a little out of sync here, but I do believe there's a couple people from the public that wish to make a short address to us. Allison, would you care to join us?
You can just pull it up. Okay. Good evening. I am Allison Fries, resident of Ward 2. I've lived in the city of Hudsonville now for not quite 11 years. A West Michigan native, born and raised in Kalamazoo, moved to the greater Holland area for a couple of years after college graduation. I have submitted a application for the board of review and was asked to come tonight just to tell you a little bit about myself. I started my career in education as a public high school teacher and co-op coordinator for West Ottawa High School in Holland. I spent the last 10 years in various HR roles at Herman Miller in Zealand, including leading projects that were based on community programming and internal career development. I've also served in a voluntary capacity for the corporate foundation and led global giving around the globe as it related to education. And about six months ago, I made a career move and am now serving as the executive director of a Grand Rapids-based nonprofit called The Source. We work in partnership with member organizations to help with employee retainment and workforce development. We work on barriers that get in the way of getting people to work every day or advancing, things like childcare, transportation, housing, a long list of things, you name it. So, I've been in the community now for quite some time, was recently approached about getting a little bit more involved in the Hudsonville community. And so, I have submitted my application. A couple additional things I want to mention. I am a board of director to LAU, Latin Americans United for Progress in Holland, and I currently serve as the committee chair to the Hudsonville Cub Scout PAC 3149 here in Hudsonville. My husband, Bill, is a firefighter, has been on the department now for almost 10 years, and my two boys, Adam and Ben, are students at Park Elementary in Hudsonville Public District. So, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you for stepping up. You need not hang around to the end of the vote because I'm fairly confident that you'll be approved for the board of review. Jeremy, did you want to choose to speak to us? Jeremy was, we had your interview, when was that, last week, was it?
A week ago, Tuesday, I think.
So, maybe we could give a few words about yourself. We're pretty excited having you join us, too.
Yeah, so, good evening. My name is Jeremy Camp. I've been a resident for almost seven years now. Originally grew up southwest suburbs of Chicago. Came up here for school, went to Kelvin, graduated Kelvin in 2015. And then, I've been working as a civil engineer at Bryant and Newhoff since I graduated Kelvin and then moved here a year after I graduated. I've served on the zoning board of appeals now for about a year and a half, and then there was a planning commission seat that opened up, and I was really just looking for kind of a little bigger time commitment than the zoning board offered and really kind of interested in planning the future of Hudsonville. It kind of lines up with the work I do on a daily basis, and I really enjoy that. So, I'm really looking forward to being a member of the planning commission and just helping with future developments that come into the city and just help with the approval process there and be able to, yeah, offer my time to the city and just help there. So, yeah, me and my wife have lived just east of Hudsonville Christian Middle School now, and, yeah, we're excited, really, really like the city, so.
We're excited to have you join the planning commission. It's quite a time commitment, and it's also very enjoyable. Times can be a little stressful. I believe there's one commissioner up here that you have a relationship with or you know?
Yeah, so, I live across the street from Phil, unfortunately.
His mother was my high school classmate.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Well, part of the reason that's important is that our roles up here is relational, and we all, all of us look for people in the community that we know could fill these leadership roles, such as when you helped us find Allison to fill the board review. And it's important for all of us to understand that we have a role to seek those kind of people in the community and see if we can bring them on to these other boards and develop them, because quite frankly, we're not going to be here forever ourselves. So, we're glad to have you join the planning commission. It will be next week, Wednesday, 7 o'clock, and hopefully you got your packet, and you've already done your homework.
I'm looking forward to it. I already got a bunch of stuff I got to read on that, and we'll have the whole zoning ordinance memorized by now.
Are there any questions for Jeremy from the commission? We're just glad to have you, and here again, you needn't hang around for the meeting because I'm confident that the commission will approve your selection for the planning commission.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to December, public statistical reports. We, yeah. We already did the consent.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to move on to public safety. We're going to do this a little out of order tonight since the fire department was presenting some service pins. So, first up is Sergeant. You didn't ticket my car, did you?
That's already gone. Well, it's nice to see you all again.
Thank you for the lock on the wheel.
We have, we have the year end.
2021 is done. It was a good year. We did quite a few calls, more than normal. This past month was an average month. As far as traffic stats go, there was 103 traffic contacts, which is lower than normal, but because of weather, that's kind of where we sit. As December, we did some personnel changes. Deputy Monte White, he was here for a little over a year. He has taken a new position at West Ottawa Public Schools as a school liaison officer, and he'll be a perfect fit for that position. We then also had Deputy Jason Kilgore. He was, he was a felon who wasn't supposed to really stay that long. He ended up staying for about nine months. He was a great asset to the city, but he also took a new position. So, we have Aubrey Malkowitz, who is present with us today, and Scott Davis, our new personnel. I'll let her introduce herself in just a minute. Deputy Davis, he's been with the sheriff's office for about five years. He's also got about seven or eight years in North Carolina, so he's got significant police experience. He's a crime scene technician. He does lots of community policing stuff that he's been involved with. He's been a school resource officer here, so really excited that he's here, and he's going to be a great fit. That's basically all I have except for one, one more stat thing. Our traffic services unit released the traffic crashes for Ottawa County for 2021. Total crashes in Ottawa County were 6,753. 1,118 of those were injury accidents. There was total of 25 fatalities. Three of those were alcohol-related, six were drugs-related, and two were not involved with any drugs. So, that's kind of goes to show that alcohol and drugs are a proponent of that. Let's see. For specifically for Hudsonville City, we took 202 crashes. We are, we are higher than Fairiesburg, Spring Lake, and Coopersville as well for our crashes, but I would definitely say that we have a higher traffic volume than all of those cities. So, I don't see that being too high or out of control compared to such as Holland Township is 1,535 crashes. So, we're definitely in the lower end of that. I'm just going to let, I'll break them up and just kind of introduce herself to you guys, just so you guys can get an idea who she is, and we'll let her sneak out of here.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Malkowitz. I was born, actually, in Hudsonville. Shortly after that, moved to Walker, grew up there my entire childhood. I went to GRCC for business, worked in business for a couple of years, decided that's not what I wanted to do. So, then I went to the Grand Valley Police Academy. After that, I worked for the City of Kentwood Police Department, and then after that, I worked for the Rockford Department of Public Safety, and now I'm here at the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office, and I'm excited to be a part of Hudsonville.
Welcome, welcome home.
Thank you.
Any questions for me at all?
Moving on to emergency management department, Dave?
Good evening. So, December, we had a few activities, but it was actually a relatively normal December for us, except for the high wind event on the 11th. Tree lighting went well. We went up and helped out in Grand Haven, like we've been doing for quite a few years now, probably, I don't know, five or 10 years. But then the wind on the 11th, I don't know how many of you had the chance to see the power pole that was swaying out over the roadway and getting, you know, kind of almost out to the center line. And so, we closed that off for, pretty much until we could get barricades out there and everything to make sure it was secure. And, yeah, that's really it for December. It was a good December for us. Any questions or comments?
Anything for Dave? Appreciate the support on the high wind event. That was, that was kind of a spooky night with that, with that pole, so.
Yes, yeah, and the team did well. They handled it by themselves from, you know, late morning on because I was out with you all at the strategic planning event. So, I was glad that they were able to take care of it and free me up for that.
I guess the only question I have is the barricades, we had to get those on loan from the county, or we didn't?
Those came from Gabz, I think. Give him a break?
Oh, give him a break, system.
Yeah.
So, is it something we need to look to have on our own, or?
The, I think the lighted barricades were on loan from Granville.
From Granville?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I already asked Bob about whether we should invest, so we are looking into that.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? Keep up the fine work. We're appreciative of everything you do.
Thank you.
And now, Chief, you're up. You got the whole gang here, it looks like, huh?
Yeah, insurrection down here or something like that. Good evening, and you have our statistical report, our year-end report, actually, and we ended up with 547 calls for the year, second most in our history since we stopped going regularly to the laurels. So, good year. We were all safe, nobody got hurt, and I think we come down with COVID maybe a couple times, so we're fortunate that way. As far as the report is concerned, we talked about the ISO last month. We won't be hearing anything from them until about April, May, or June for that final thing. And report on the Fit Body Boot Camp giveaway, that was a great success. Fit Body raised $190,000 donations, and they bought presents for like 32 unfortunate, less fortunate families in town, and they used our fire station to have these families come in with their cars, and they loaded them up. The high school girls' basketball team, they came by and they helped load the cars. So, that was a pretty neat event. Took about an hour and a half, but, boy, what a pile of gifts. They did a great job on that, so. Other than that, is there's any questions I can answer for you on the reports?
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead.
Okay. What the service pin is all about is kind of a reward for the guys for their dedication and their years of service. They are in five-year increments, so the first thing they get is five years, then 10, 15, and so on. So, it's just kind of a little reward for them. They hook it onto their flap on their pocket, and it's kind of a nice little thing for them to have momentum, momentum. We have five people today that are going to get some reward. The first one will be a five-year reward from us is Nate Tennyson. Nate, will that come up? Robert Van Kampen?
Over the five years?
Seems like a hundred. Inside joke. Josh Walling, he has a 10-year pin. And a 15-year pin goes to our lieutenant, Pete Honemeyer. And last but not least, 25-year pin goes to Eric Niederfeld. So, thanks to them and to all of them. Bunch of dedicated guys, you know, they go to work every day at their own jobs and get up during the night and go answer calls and still have to get up the next day and go to work. So, we appreciate all their efforts, all their dedication to the city, and I hope you all do the same. So, thank you. Unless you have any questions? Thanks very much.
So, Eric, you have 25 years.
Starting at 10.
Is there, is there one standout moment being in the department of great joy?
Well, I always think of the big fires of the, now, when going to the schools on fire prevention, I'll just want to see the kids. Kids like to see firemen, sometimes they always like to see, ah, they like to see the firemen.
That's pretty cool. Well, we're very happy you dedicated 25 years to the city of Hudsonville and to your craft. Says a lot about you as a person and about our community as a whole. So, thank you very much on behalf of the citizens of our city. You make us safe and you allow us to sleep well at night. Anything else from the commission? Hearing none, we're going to move on. Thank you, Chief. Next up, I believe, is the treasurer. She has sequestered herself in the back with a mask.
Hi, I'm in the middle of the charter process, so I sneak out here, that's where I'm going.
We're good.
Okay, so, we'll start with the general fund summary for November. Just want to point out that we are at 78.48% of our budgeted revenues and at 51.88% of our budgeted expenditures. Dollar-wise, that means in November, we brought in $50,138, which is about $18,000 more than this time last month, or last year. On the revenue to date, that brings us to 3.3 million, which is about $89,000 more than last year. Expenditure, expenditure summary, we expensed $276,053, which is about $31,000 more than last year, bringing our expenditure to date total to a little bit over 2.3 million, which is 264,000 more than the year before. Question on those reports at all?
Does that include the ARPA money yet?
No, so, the ARPA money went into its own separate fund.
Okay.
So, this is just the general.
That does not, there's no dilution there from the ARPA?
No, nope, nothing yet. So, we'll move on to the investment report for November, and you'll see at the top are the two CDs that expired. And then, in green, you'll see the two new CDs that we got in replacement of those. The CDs that expired were 0.5%, both of them, in the renewals. One of them was 0.3 and the other one was 0.95. Again, rates are still pretty low. Treasury has said that they're planning on increasing them this year periodically, so we're still being very short-term on the investment so that if we do see a rising rate environment, we can take advantage of that. But overall, our rate of return was 1.37% for the month. Questions on that report at all?
Any questions for the treasurer? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to payment of the bills, is there a motion for the finance committee?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $313,822.61, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
I support that motion. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on payment of the bills? Hearing none. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Pay the bills. Moving on to ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion from the finance committee?
I will make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $328,622.71, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
I'll support that motion. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on ACH funds distribution? Hearing none. Roll call, please, clerk.
Commissioner Debray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bolheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Make the distributions. Moving on to administration. Item number 14, city resident survey proposal. Patrick, before I ask for the motion, we discussed this rather extensively, I believe, at the strategic planning event. I think the commissioners probably showed a pretty good feel on it. Did you want to talk before I asked for the motion then? Do you want to talk to it? I mean, I see $15,000 is in the budget. This came in at, I think, $8,200 or something?
Yeah.
But you can go up to $15,000, correct, if you have to?
Right. The $15,000 was for city commission expenses related to special projects, which included, we talked about this survey, as well as the strategic plan facilitation that we had done. But this, this is a continuation or another outreach effort to the residents of the city just to get their feedback on the direction, specifically as it relates to the new strategic plan that we're working on right now. The last time we did a community survey was 2011, so it's been quite a while that we've asked for community feedback, and I think it helps you as elected officials represent the ideals of the constituents, and it's money well spent. The Frost Research Center, we haven't worked with them here at the city, but I have worked with them through our efforts with the West Michigan Express. They did a survey for us on that, and very, very high level of detail, and the analogy, the analysis that they do and the findings that they present are very easily understandable, and I think you'll find it beneficial. So, it's our recommendation. We did get two quotes. The other was from Epic MRA, and this is the lower of the two at $8,700.
I guess the only question I have, Patrick, this does not include any in-person interviews. You make mention of that, that that is still an option. How would that be decided if we decide to do some in-person interviewing?
So, I think, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about this at the project management discussion with them, which would be the first step where they come in and meet with us at work session, talk about kind of what we're looking to get out of this survey. But the main approach is going to be a mail distribution, postcard mail distribution to all residents in the city or all households in the city. And then, depending on the response, they, they may want to do some additional outreach if they didn't get an adequate response. But she feels pretty confident that this, this method will yield enough response for us to have some valuable input and data.
Very well. Is there a motion?
Patrick, I have one question quick. What's the average percentage of people that respond to these? Did they say anything about what their hope was?
I don't, I can't answer that. I know that when we last did this, for example, when we did the Epic MRA survey, it was a telephone survey, and that's the other reason we're doing a different approach, because in 2011, a lot of people still had landlines, so it's much harder to get ahold of people in their households today. So, but at that time, out of the 70, 100 residents, we were shooting for 400 responses to get a good cross-section. So, whatever that percentage is, I think would be the target of this survey.
Do you get to approve the mailing that they're going to send out?
You will. We'll, we'll craft those questions together so that you're on board with. And that's, Epic will, will, their knowledge and expertise will help you write the questions in a way that they're, you know, scientifically viable and they're not leading, that kind of thing.
Is it the work session in two weeks?
No, that's going to probably be a work session later in February, my guess would be. Got to get the strategic plan out of the way.
Before I ask for the motion again, is there any questions for Patrick? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm, to accept and sign the attached 2022 resident survey proposal from Frost Center for Data and Research at Hope College. That's drafted.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion on this motion? I'm just clearing what it's all about, and there'll be more discussions when we work through the questions.
Yeah, that'll be that first step in the process. Yeah, that'll be that first step in the process.
Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner DeBrey?
Yes.
Lorar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. The motion carries. Moving on to item number 15, motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed. So planning commission is Jeremy Kemp, who addressed us earlier this evening. The zoning board of appeal, which is Chris Hannah. He is coming off the. Is he, he was an applicant at one point, I think, for planning commission, is that right?
He's, he's the alternate.
He was the alternate on the ZBA, so now he's fleeting up to be a primary. And then we're also adding to the board review Allison Fries, who met with us earlier tonight, and she introduced ourselves. Are there any questions on these candidates? Any discussion? I want to thank Phil and Dave for their efforts seeking out these candidates.
Yeah, I'll just talk a little bit about specifically Jeremy and the planning commission. I think, and I think Dan would probably agree, Strickland eyes, it's really a good asset to have someone with a background in infrastructure.
Particularly since we lost.
Civil engineer.
Particularly since we lost you.
On a, on a planning commission, I think that is a very good thing. I think Jeremy would be a very good asset, given his education and his experience.
And Dave, you were the one that picked Allison, so gee.
Yeah, I've had the chance to work with Allison over a few stops on that career she mentioned. She's the type of family that makes Hudsonville the special place that it is and looking forward to having her plugged in more with the city.
Is there a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed?
I will make a motion to approve the mayor's list of appointments to commissions as amended.
Second the motion. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please, clerk.
Commissioner Lorar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, the boards and commissions are approved. Before I call for adjournment, we have another guest here that chooses to speak to the commissioners. That would be state legislative House Rep. Brad Slaw. Brad, I think you want to address the commission tonight. It's been, it's been a really weird couple of years for you with pandemic. I don't admire you. I admire you, but I don't.
Thank you.
It had to be a rough couple of years.
It has definitely been an interesting time. The ride has gotten fun and weird all at the same time. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm sorry that I wasn't here promptly to get into your, as it was on the agenda. I was at another meeting. I've got another meeting to go to when I get done here, so it's just one of those kind of nights. First, I'd like to just address, you may have seen, heard that I missed 62 votes, which is about one-tenth of the votes that happened in this past year. They all happened in the last week of session. I ended up with COVID, and they wouldn't, based on protocol, allow me back in the house to vote. So I was unable to be there for the last four voting days. And 62 votes later, I'm like, oh my gosh. I had a perfect record going into it, but it was blown out of the water. One of the interesting pieces that's going on right now, taking up a lot of oxygen, not only for the communities, but for the legislators, and that is the redistricting and what's going on with that. And it's going to, one, force me to change districts. I will be, all of my signage, everything has to disappear because I was in the 90th. I'm now going to be part of the 85th. So you folks will all be in the 85th district as, as far as the House goes. The interest, one of the interesting things to me is that as we look at what they've done, the redistricting commission, we, you folks either gain, because you're gaining representation, right? So where you, where Ottawa County used to be under one, Bill Heisinger, one US congressman, we're now, there are now going to be three representing Ottawa County. Where there was one senator representing Ottawa County, Roger Victory, there will now be three senators. So interestingly, we, Ottawa County gains people who have touchpoints with us, but maybe loses the ability to interface as tightly as we used to before. Or you used to have one, they were, you guys, I'll just use you folks, you're probably important for the one to come here and talk to them, talk to you folks. But if there's three representing Ottawa County, yes, you have a portion of it, but you don't get all three of them coming to talk to you. And they really represent you in a sense because it's the county, right? So interesting, it's an interesting thought process. So you'll still be, your area is still represented by the fourth congressional district. Bill Heisinger will be running for that, so potentially that. The 31st Senate District, Roger Victor will be running for that. The, and you'll be represented by the 85th District in the House, and I will be running for that seat. I will formally be turning in my, my application or whatever on Friday of this week. So you'll see that down. And just, but I did want you to know that. There's still, I saw a recent article interview that said in the MERS document that said that some, one of the, one of the folks, part of the MERS crew said, hey, it's a 50-50 trap shoot on whether there's going to be lawsuits that actually make some sort of difference. Obviously, there's lawsuits about how the redistricting has been done, but they're saying, eh, there's a possibility that even some of this gets overturned changed before we get all finished. So I've not ordered any of my documents yet. I thought I better wait just a bit. I did want to just touch on one thing that the House passed just before break, and that was just about a billion dollars in money that we're hoping to be able to use, it's out of the ARPA fund stuff, to be able to use toward helping to fight and slow the spread of the COVID virus. So it's things like the monoclonal antibodies. How do we get that and make that available to our communities where it doesn't appear to be available here in the state of Michigan and in many other states right now? And if we can get our hands on it, how can we do it in someplace other than hospital emergency rooms? Because that's the only place in Michigan where it's been allowed to be done. Because if it actually makes a difference, why should we be clogging up an emergency room bed when we can do it someplace else? So we've got dollars in there for that. We've got dollars in there for schools because they need to be able to do way more testing as they move forward. And what else can we do for testing in general across the state? So those are some of the things that we're at. There will be some huge discussions as we go forward. There are lots of ARPA dollars to be done as a state, and we will have to figure out where they're going. And budgeting starts almost immediately when we get back in session tomorrow. So with that, if there's any questions, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer them or I'll take them at my office if you'd like to give me a call.
Brad, do you maybe have your business card? Do you leave them with us?
I do.
Okay. Let's make sure all of us got a business card, particularly since you're running again. We, we need to have, continue to have that opportunity to contact you. Any questions for Brad?
Brad, have you heard anything from the governor as far as like putting in place a mask mandate or anything again? I know she's pretty low-profile these days. I'm sure it has nothing to do with the November election, but.
Has nothing to do with that. I'm sure you're exactly right, though. I, I have not heard that she's truly thinking about a mask mandate or any of those kinds of things. And we're continuing to wait to find out what happens with vaccinations, so.
Okay. On the Supreme Court you're talking about, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for the, our state rep? Thank you, Brad.
Uh huh, thank you.
Before I call for the adjournment, is there anybody else in the public that chooses to address the commission tonight? We're going to have a short, short meeting here. We'll go down the dais. Tobin?
I think it was really cool, Chief, that you brought all your folks tonight to do the service pins. That was pretty neat. It's good to put names and faces together. So thank you all for coming. And yeah, Chief, you can do this again. This was pretty neat. And get the boot on the car before we leave, would you?
Larry?
I can express the same thing. It's good to see all the firefighters here. And thank you so much for your service, as with our public safety. I appreciate that.
It's a big deal.
It is a lot of work and a big commitment, after hours. I applaud you for that.
Yeah, just thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Same thing, unseen and vital, so thank you.
Clerk, you have anything you want to bring up?
Nope.
Patrick?
Just Representative Slaw mentioned the ARPA money. There are, there is some new direction that's just been coming down on that. So we'll be updating the commissioners on that at the, probably the next work session as well. There's quite a bit more flexibility now in how those dollars are spent.
Good.
So we can talk through that, those options. And I forgot what else I was going to say, but I do want to express my appreciation for the five recipients and their years of service to the city, so thank you.
Very well. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved? Is there a support? It's been supported. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.